Agenda would be the pledge of allegiance. And hopefully trustee Eisenberg has a flag. All right, so those who are able, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
States of America.
And to the Republic or which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you all. Is there? We have no people registered for being members of the public or indeed public comment. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, sir. Nobody's here.
No good. All right. Seeing nobody here in the public, there'll be no public comment at this time. Would entertain approval of the minutes.
Mr. Two Redder, there are no minutes today.
We ain't got no minutes. All right. So I won't call that item on the agenda. The supervisors.
Did I make a request?
You may.
Jerome, I don't mean to be difficult. I'm curious. No, hear me out. We're not showing minutes on the website. And my question is, are they, do they exist?
Yes. Yes, I just haven't made them into PDF and put them on the website. It's just, it's terrible. There's some, you're right, there are.
I know what you're going through. I'm not questioning you.
To go over the building too to find that booklet. I just haven't left.
I took care of it. I took care of it. Be that as it may, I just think it's important to get the minutes up on the website. Can Sandy help you in some way?
She probably could. Jack's super good. He's been exceptionally helpful everything. My mom was just calling me. I'm so sorry, Stefan.
Go ahead.
Not ignoring your question. I just.
Yeah. It's a difficult situation.
It is.
So at least for the time being, let's move on. We could always come back if the situation resolves itself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think it's gonna, but.
Stefan, the Youtubes are available, so that is something. So there's complete access to those.
Yeah, we can adjust it backwards. So it's not ideal, but it's.
I just don't want to be questioned throughout having it.
Oh, absolutely. We have very much verbatim record.
Okay.
Excuse me, Jack, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Sorry, Alan.
That's okay. Supervisor's report, as is the case these days, will be brief. The key part of the supervisor's report is the cooperation that I've been able to achieve from the incoming supervisor. We're fortunate in that the caucus cast slated without objection a new slate of officers. So we're able to proceed with a minimum of disruption. And given that we know who the new supervisor is going to be, and there will be an agenda offered by the new supervisor going forward, there's no reason for this old guy to be inserting items into the agenda that we don't need. One, it's very helpful to me. Two, I'm just not physically able to do a lot of the tasks that would be necessary. And I appreciate trustee Eisenberg stepping in. And I also appreciate trustee Thomas stepping in to actually run the meeting. There's nobody I would feel more confident in entrusting the parliamentary responsibilities than trustee Thomas. He'll bring the park district experience plus God knows what else into our meeting, and I appreciate it deeply. So that basically is the most of the supervisor's report. One other is the work that the clerk has done over the last several terms. I've had the opportunity and the pleasure along with Stefan to serve many terms with Clerk Hines, and it's been a true joy. And while I understand Jerome, you're going through a very difficult time now, that doesn't take away from all of the work that you've done over the past many years. And it's deeply appreciated and really can't be replaced. So you do the best you can. I know from personal experience what you're going through a little bit. Is Phil around in your building? Have you seen him? The great big tall guy? He's kind of.
He's, he's one of my neighbors.
I, I know, and I drive him to a cancer support group periodically. And I've, so I see him, I see Pete Tyer, I see, it's really quite, when, when the moment allows itself, it's quite a, quite a group of folks getting together on the corner. Again, thank you, Jerome, for all the work you've done over the years. It's been appreciated and it continues to be appreciated. So thank you.
Okay.
As the, before we move on to the clerk's report and the assessor's report, I think what I'm going to do is fulfill my obligation to turn this over to trustee Thomas and maybe learn a little bit as I watch the recording of how the meeting was run. And maybe I'll learn going forward. But in any event, John, it's your meeting and everybody else have a terrific meeting. I'm going to go to bed.
I want to go to bed.
And twirl on my bow tie and wish you guys the best. And know you're going to do, have a fantastic meeting. So you're on.
Thanks, Alan. And let me apologize to all of you. For some reason or another, my Wi-Fi system is connected to the world via Xfinity. And Xfinity blew something, a gasket someplace. So I had to go back into my system and use a different connection to the network. But here I am, and happily so, and.
All right, I'm attempting to leave, so I'll see.
Okay, so the next thing up, I gather, is the clerk's report. And Jerome, there you are, and it's good to see you again.
I am ready for this. Thank you, trustee Thomas. I'm sorry Alan just left because I really thank him for those nice remarks. It's been a joy. This has been the best board that I've served with. I've said that it's truly, you guys work together so well. I hope the next board is even better. And Alan does know that we're going to honor him with another award this year, the Harriet Hahn Lifetime of Service. And I thought, what a perfect way for him to close out all his years of service with the Harriet Hahn Lifetime. And having worked with Harriet and knowing her, I know that like for him, the Georgie noise and now the Harriet Hahn's really fitting and well deserved. And I was actually, trustee Thomas, I didn't call you before, but I was going to ask you and trustee Moser to present that to him as our, as our, as our last award.
I saw that on your agenda for the town meeting, and I'll be happy, more than happy to do that.
Okay, I just figured. Oh, hey, Mom, I'm having.
Hey, Mom!
So for my clerk's report, first thing I'd like to present, Jack, is it okay if I share the screen? Just make it easier to show.
Sure.
So I did send this out to you earlier, but we've been reviewing, reviewing. And as I stated earlier, Jack McCall has been an enormous help. So I hope in the new term, you guys will make the most of Jack in every way. I mean, he's not just communications, he's specialty on a lot of things. So for sharing the screen, okay, host disabled, share screen. Is it okay if you, I'm just.
Yeah, all right, bear with me. Okay, we should be good.
Oops.
I'm answering on my screen.
Is it? Am I able to share?
I'm trying.
That's so, that's okay if it's.
It says we're sharing screen right now, so.
That looks like Brian Cranston.
Now, do you see the agenda?
Nope.
Brian's still coming up.
Okay.
Well, it's okay. That's fine. So you all have a copy of this annual town meeting proposed agenda. And I just want to review, Gail, we can do something neat. In years past, we've had Girl Scouts sing, for some of you remember years ago. And so we'll, we'll come up with it, whether America the Beautiful, then whatever. But it will be nice to have the Girl Scouts lead the pledge of allegiance this year. And then, so for a change, this year, Elliot, you did a fine job last year. You were great, but it's nice to involve other people, particularly one of the leaders of the Citizens League. So I've asked Victoria McDonough. Of course, there could be outside nominations. We always ask for that, but since they usually want somebody to do it without, you know, just being a pop surprise, I've asked Victoria, and she's agreed. So, and then she'll proceed the meeting through, and then there'll be the reports from the elected officials, and then the financial report, and then any public comments. If you just, can you see the screen? That I'm sharing.
We see you.
Oh, I'm just reading from my screen then. And then, of course, the setting the meeting. And then I just wanted to review with you the community service award winner. Because we do not have a program, we do not have the citizens. If you recall, last year, there was a question about getting a citizens referendum on the ballot. We don't have any of that. And, you know, Jack and I went, we went all search of ideas on this. And we thought, you know, let's just have our business and then celebrate some really neat awards. This is a neat thing that, speaking with Gail about, you know, Eagles and Gold, the highest award for Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts. They have had very awkward recognition of their service. So this year, we'll invite, we'll call the troops. If they show, they, they, they will be recognized and we'll give them a certificate. If they don't, that's okay. But even if we have a handful, it'd just be nice to know that out there in the community are all these young women and men who are doing community service projects because they feel it's important. And I just think, what a neat thing to just give them a shout out, right?
Jerome?
Yes.
I don't know if it's of any value, but you know, I was on that Girl Scout board, and I've got a little gold Girl Scout pen. I'll be happy to help find the right people to call. The lady that was big dog in the volunteer as opposed to the paid person is, her day job is chair of the Make-A-Wish Foundation. And, and she's just a wonderful person. I don't know if I could get hold of her for you, but I'll think about it. Let me know what you think.
Any connection, you know, that Gail and I have special connection with scouting and, and maybe some of you too. But Jack, that, John, that would be really helpful. Anything? Just to put the word out, I doubt we'll have a flood of Eagles and Gold. But if we did, how nice, just to have them recognized and participate. The next thing is that Jerry Ginsburg has done so much, and I know his results. So Brian Leverens will give that, those awards. And then a friend of the township, I've asked Elliot to, oh Elliot, I'll take that second star off. Trustee Robbins will present to the Winnicke Presbyterian Church and all that they did to help with food pantry services. And then township award, hey, hey, Sandy and I going out together. And I asked Jeanie because she knows us so well and so.
Sandy, Mary here?
I don't think so. So, and then, then the Georgie Noise Award, I've asked Assessor Churchwell because Jim Carlson did it for more than 10 years. He did the moderator, and he always showed such enthusiasm, and I thought we need for Jean to present that award. And then John and Stefan, what a nice way to finish out our meeting, you know, honoring all that Alan's done from trustee to committees to supervisor. It would be a neat way, and that's, and that's it. And that's what I need is, if you want to make any modifications, you're welcome to. If you're, if you're happy with it, then we'll approve it. Again, it's virtual. And we're going to do our best to start on time, move it through, and just have a memorable, enjoyable meeting.
Jerome, I have some questions.
Please.
Sandy, is Sandy retiring this year as well?
We're going out together. Stefan, I didn't have to, because I was having an issue with, but I didn't get to, you know, I promised Stefan and all the board, I will do my very best with Nicole. I, I'm enthusiastic to like, share with her some of the possibility, some of the things that we did do, and then some of the things that can be done. Because it's kind of exciting with Nicole coming on, she'll be able to like, just take this in a great direction. And with the new board and Gail, it's just going to be super. So I promise you, like, I have a lot to share with her and, and work with her on.
Jerome, are we going to have a deputy clerk?
Well, that's something I've already spoken to, to Gail about, and that's something that I think Nicole would really benefit from. It's just been a great, it's been a great asset having Sandy, as you know, over the years. I mean, when I start, plus even, although you don't have him today, the minutes, just the idea that you can look back all through the years and say, there were two people listening to the tapes, and I still have all those cassette tapes, you know? And we, it's just two people listening, thinking, writing, it's just very helpful. You know, if you value the value of those historical. Did you find, did we do something for the Spanish flu? Did you find that, Stefan?
The minutes ended June of 1918 and didn't pick up again until 2020, or 1920. So that period of time was missing.
They weren't using Zoom, huh? Right. What were they thinking?
Most of the books in the library.
Oh, wow. Hey, Sandy, I'm on with the group right now. I don't think Sandy has the link, Jack. Is there a way? I know you got a whole bunch of. Hey, Sandy, I'm on with the board right now. Do you think Sandy can?
She has to use, you have to use her home email, I think. She said there was, she had a problem accessing.
Well.
From home.
I just, to honor Sandy will be a real treat. And of course, I've asked Jean to say something about, but then I want to give a special thing because she's been, she's helped the township, you know, Diane can testify. She's helped the township in a number of ways so that whoever the new deputy clerk is, think about the possibilities. I mean, things, things that you could help out with for the township and so.
Jerome, is that a paid position?
No, well, she's a contract worker. I mean, sure not much, but she does, and she barely bills the township anything. But it, it, it could be, if, if, there's so many needs that she has helped with. But she's filled in too when the township needs, so Diane, is Diane on?
Yeah, I'm on. I did have my thing muted. Yes, she's been very helpful. She's served in our offices, probably for everybody in the office, doing different things. And is always there and available to help us. And she is a contract employee. We do pay her hourly based on the hours that are needed or what are used.
We got it.
But that's something, I hope the board, and I hope the board, and I know Gail considered this in a good way as somebody could help in a lot of, in a lot of ways. And she's helped, she's helped us. No, Mom, the meeting's still going on. So I, I, if there's other, it's still going on. But there's, we need to have a motion to approve it, but if there's other questions, I'd welcome.
I have another question.
Please.
I was wondering if we should do something more for Alan. And I say that in the context of, we named a, the pantry after one of our past employees. And I would have no problem considering naming the conference room or any other room in the building in honor of Alan. It's just a thought. I mean, the awards we give are nice. And I appreciate I've gotten some myself. But he's really got them above and beyond, and it might be some nice recognition. So I thought I'd throw it out there.
Stefan, I just, that's a, that's a fabulous idea, but we still have time. In fact, we, we still have one event before, before they, before Alan finishes. That's the May 24th, when we have the inauguration. And, and so there's time, even if you don't want to make that decision right away, you know, we still have until then where Alan will.
That's why. Jerome, I didn't realize there was another meeting after the annual town meeting. We could do it then if we wanted to.
Another meeting that will, there'll be to inaugurate the new board, so I get to swear.
It's a good idea, though.
That's a fabulous. I, I, when I look up and see the sign of Betty, because I knew her, and I just. Makes me so happy. Such an honor to serve Stefan.
A quick question for you, Jerome, before you move on. Do you know where we can find, if we have, where the bylaws of this group are, exist? If we have them?
I don't think we have them.
We may not. Most groups do, but we don't have to.
I have, right here, boy, speak, I guess, if you can see me, I have the laws and duties. That's a thrill.
I got the same damn thing, but that's not the bylaws of the group.
What do you want to know? We, we have a mission. We have a mission statement with various corollaries. I'm not sure we have bylaws per se.
Maybe not. I've searched normal places, Elliot, and I couldn't find them. Diane looked, somebody else looked too. We're not, we don't need to have them, believe me. I've just gone through a revamp of a bylaws of another organization. It's a pain in the neck. It can be. Okay, Jerome, what else you got for us?
I'd like to approve the annual town meeting agenda as submitted by Clerk Hines.
You're going to make a motion to that effect, Gail?
Yes.
I will second it.
Trust, trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Moser?
Yeah.
Trustee Robbins?
Yes.
And trustee Eisenberg?
Yes.
Okay, thank you much. And the second item is about the election. And if I could share the screen, I would show you. It looks pretty cool, the ballot, especially since, you know, the, your slate is unchallenged this year. And so it looks good. I've also triple checked with the county that the advisory question, the referendum question was listed on the ballot, and it is. And the good news is that early voting, centennial as, as has been before over Will Matt. So it's just, it's terrific. It should be a nice election. And one thing I'm kind of excited about is that Will Matt has always has contested races, but, and the school board, so that maybe there'll be a little more interest in the, in the poll, like consolidated election.
When, when does early voting start over there? Do you know?
I, I think it did.
No, it March 22nd.
27th. Gail, I've been out of it. I really like.
Okay, thank you, Gail.
No worries. It's on my calendar.
I'm glad you didn't go. Plus, you can go Northbrook Village Hall or, or the courthouse. And that's, Mr. Trustee.
The only place that you can drop a mail-in ballot, so you cannot drop a mail-in ballot at Will Matt this time around. You have to go to the courthouse.
And the election is April 9?
April 6.
April 6, okay.
Gail, it's the 6th, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Jerome, what else have you got for us?
The last thing is just, when you see the ATM postcard, I didn't request it, but it is kind of, yeah, it's just, it's kind of. I'm sorry to the board here. I gotta.
You've got a mother, that's what you've got.
Jerome, you've got a dispensation. You're done as far as I'm concerned. Take care of your business at home.
Feel better.
It's just, we're at.
I can, I can take over if you want me to explain.
Thank you very much.
Jerome, God bless. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Be of good health if you can, okay? And your mother too.
We have a postcard that should be out in the mail this week to promote the annual meeting with the Zoom and also the Facebook Live to the public. And Jerome and I have worked on the agenda together. There's going to be a press release prepared, trying to get as many eyes as we can onto the Zoom meeting. So, you know, and, and, you know, given his, his situation, you know, we've just kind of shared the work. So I, I think we're in good shape as far as promoting the, the town meeting. That's the, that's the Cliff Notes update on the, on the town meeting.
Good, thank you. Yes. Now, Jan, Churchwell, assessor's report, please.
Thank you. It's very brief. There's hardly any. We haven't received our results yet from the Board of Review. We were supposed to, we were told we would get them this week. And then last, late last week, we were told we should hopefully have them by the end of the month. All that means is that it's pushing, it pushes us back farther down on the assessor's schedule because we cannot get scheduled for this year's appeals until the, until the board, until the assessor has finished reviewing what the Board of Review did to us last year. So I'm looking now at, I mean, mid, mid-April would, you know, would be the absolute earliest, and I think more likely late April. So to all intents and purposes, my, my opinion is we will be open mostly in the month of May for appeals to the assessor's office at the earliest. And that's about it for now.
Okay.
It's no news.
Thank you. Next up is Diane, I guess, a financial report. Year-end closing update, and then segue right into the next year's budget if you can do that neatly.
Sure, glad to. There's two documents. The first one is what I call the preliminary closing document. It's four pages in length. I'd sent those out last evening. And I just want to emphasize that this is not a final report, and we don't need to have it even posted or shared at this point in time. Reason being, this is not a complete report to the extent that there are still outstanding expenses that are going to be logged into the actual system and posted. For instance, most importantly, the community support grants, which will be the, I believe, $282,000. The final count for that, the number of applicants was 235. And at the last meeting, it was approved that there's going to be $1,200 per person. Just to briefly go over this, this will give you just a brief overview of those dollars that are posted. For instance, on the first page, the thing I would like to highlight is that we did receive dollars for the levy in the month of February, which sometimes it gets delayed, but just noting that we're at 97% of that which we levied back in December, giving us 97% of the receipts for the town fund. Should something else come in during this month, once this month is closed and over, when we go through the audit, then they will then be able to reconcile that. But at this point in time, we're at 97%, which I think is very healthy, given past years. Moving on to the second page. Nothing exciting to highlight, just noting the different charges. I did want to mention the first column, and I made a note there that this represents the adjusted line items that were discussed and approved at the last meeting. And so you're going to see a little highlight on there that just indicates where we changed those dollars, which is an important thing to look at when we look at the, the next document, which is the first edition of the budget. Just noting, we haven't gone over, everything is in line for all of these line items. We have not, as I just mentioned, of, given the, or excuse me, have posted the community support grants at this point in time. That will show up once those have, the posting, when the posting is completed. Moving on to the next page. Highlighting, there's really nothing. All of these, all the final dollars have come in for the different line items. We do have a few things outstanding. I've saw some checks the other day. They're probably nothing more than about $8,000 worth, but it, just all in all, and I know Stefan's. it just all in all, and I know Stefan, sometimes you'll answer me this question, where do you think we perhaps will end at the end of the fiscal year when we have a final report, I call it? And if you look in the middle section there on the last page, or excuse me, on page three, it's showing right now a net variance of $132,000 plus positive. But if we net against that, the community support grants, which is the 282,000, and what I'm estimating is about an 8,000, we're going to come in at about $158,000. If you will, just less, less dollars than that which we've received, which we had budgeted for 505,000, which is one of the standard ways the group has been budgeting, going for the past many years. But we don't always realize that in some cases we even will receive more dollars. But I think this does demonstrate that we've used the dollars. There are certainly other dollars that could be used. But this is just kind of a an assessment of where we are based on this documentation. So we're looking at about 158,000, give or take. Once we get the final dollars, I will be able to say for sure.
158,000 negative, right?
Negative, correct. Because of what I'm doing is netting the.
Right, and I got it. I got it.
Okay, on the last page.
At a chance of still receiving a little bit more.
Pardon? What'd you say? I'm sorry, Elliot, I didn't hear you.
Oh, I am. I was just saying that it's 158, not including anything additional we get. Because we're at 97% of the levy, there's a chance something more could trickle in.
If it did come in and it was allocated back, that would show up in our in our audit for this fiscal year. What happens, though, is this is a, this is because we're on the cash basis and we document and finalize our funds as they are as of the February 28th, this would show that drop in that. So the dollars that would come in, if something comes in next month for the month, we, I don't go back and journal entry it in there in the system. This is like the clock stopped. This is the cash balance. It would then, if something is there, it would become part of next year's, but it's kind of a rotating thing. We had this happen about two years ago where a lot of dollars were coming in. It was pushing us forward. It was, it's just a major matter of the timing with the county receipts for the levies. Does that make sense? Okay. Last page, which is the same information for the general assistance account. It identifies all the dollars noting that we had adjusted the pantry dollars, and there's a little more coming in. I believe Brian had given me some information from the Grand Foods. But in essence, this this they're looking at a positive $54,000. I'm guessing about what I would call incremental, but it nonetheless is dollars is 1,000. So we'll probably end up with a positive 53,000 in the in the general assistance. Which in the past has been higher because we haven't been able to use or spend the dollars, if you will, in the pantry and different items for that. So the net projection currently is the 186048, but again, that does not include the outstanding expenses that will be posted forthwith. Okay.
Diane, am I right that you don't need the board to officially approve this because it's not the final?
That is correct. This is more, this is basically, I wanted to provide an update for the year closing and give everybody a sense of where we are. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I'll move on to the FY22 budget, 2022 budget. Okay. What I've developed here, and let me just kind of give an overview of the process, and that Jerome's no longer on the line here, but we in essence need to get this document prepared and finalized and into a format. This is our our internal documents. We don't submit this to the county. It has to be submitted in a specific format to the county, which then Jerome, and in this case, he'll probably be the one to submit that, which could be electronically now. So my recommendation would be that we do this and look at any kind of adjustments, changes, whatever the case that the board wants. And then at the, April is the annual town meeting, but schedule a meeting the end of the month so that we can get this approved and moved so that we get this out on time and that we're in that that window of time, if you will. This report, in essence, what I've done is I've, the second column is the FY22 budget, what I'm calling the first edition. And the first column, I've left the budget that we had for FY2021, thinking that this would be helpful to be able to have the different line items where we were, where we ended up on the budget. This doesn't show the actual, but you do have that in the prior document that we just looked at. And this is the budget that we had submitted for the end of this fiscal year. The dollars that I do have and the confirmations that I do have on the dollars. For instance, the property tax, I've updated that. So the dollars that you see in the property tax ordinance for 202002 is that which was approved in December. And so those dollars have been posted both for the town fund and for the general assistant. The other dollars represent, from my point of view, where I think we should target and set up as a document, pardon me, as a figure for the forthcoming year. For instance, the personal property replacement tax came in around 40, 41,000. I think perhaps next year we could get, it might be a little higher. I think we should leave that. I've reduced the interest income and certainly the passport incomes at this point in time, but it doesn't mean we don't do not need to budget for this because as moving forward, we're all in the right direction and things will improve, hopefully, all around. The next section is the 101, excuse me, 1,649,000. That's just the recap of the agency dollars that were approved at the last board meeting. And these are the dollars that Brian had presented, just highlighting Hadley School ended up in the Agency Oversight Committee and the total link, total link to community, I guess he's calling that money follows the person. So that's where those are going to be located. Moving on to the second page. I'm recommending that we leave the different scholarships and the different daycare scholarships and all those different there at that level. With the understanding that this has been an exceptional year and there is no real pattern that we can depend on with the assumption on my my part is that things will improve and that we can go back to looking at that if we do not budget at a reasonable level of funds, we may run into a problem later on in the year.
Diane, let me just roll back with a broad question about the agency programs.
Sure.
What you've thrown in, shown in the budget here for next year is basically what the committees had allocated to these agencies for this year. Am I correct?
That is correct. The right hand, the the column on the right, that is a duplication of that report that all the agencies have submitted, and then the board approved at the last meeting.
Okay, for, but are those numbers cast in bronze or steel? In other words?
Yes, they are because, which is part of the process that we go through, that it's approved at the meeting prior to our
Okay.
final, and that those are, those were approved on, and then that that is when they ended up in the discussion, adding Hadley School for the blind back.
Yeah.
And then doing that, and the the total was the 1,649.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Moving down, just looking at the different dollars. I've increased some of the, I'm base basically kept these different dollars at the same level. When I was doing this, I was looking through the actual to make sure that I was accounting for everything. I didn't remove any line items. For instance, the printing and publishing, the posters, the legal I did increase because we were within a couple hundred dollars or 500. So I know that at some point, we'll probably get an increase on the annual. The communications, I increased 5%, five and a half, I think it was, up to the 42,000. The other items, official staff expense, even though there's nothing of that sort going on because there's really not activity. I'm leaving these as as marks in our, in our, in our accounts that we have these dollars and it comes to be, then we will be able to use them.
Right, Diane?
Yes.
It it looks like you left legal flat at 10,000, but you increased the auditing by 2,000.
Correct. The legal came in, and I just have to look back at my other thing. I came in very small. I think it was a three or 4,000. But the auditing did come in, I think, at 10, at 10,550. Let me look real quick here. Legal came in at 3694. The auditing for the last year, which is in the prior document I'm looking at, was 10,255. And that was this year, leaving us just a small balance of 745. So my anticipation is they, the auditing company will increase their fees. I believe most companies would do that. I don't know at this point in time. We haven't. We just got through with the other audit due to all of the timing of the pandemic, but we eventually will get a letter that will provide that. So I'm just trying to cover the bases so that we do have those dollars available.
Very good.
Okay. Okay, I believe I finished page two. Okay, moving on to page three. What I did want to highlight, and this is certainly a board decision, but this is my recommendation. The, I've changed the dollars. If you look on the fourth page, I've increased the dollars, I should say. For many years, we've been, and I'm going to ask you to look at page four under GA, we've been charging or basically transferring or giving a percentage back to the town fund of 64,000 for the salaries, social securities. At certain, I think it's an 18%. We're saying that there's 18% here for this amount. I'm recommending at this point in time that we move up the amount of dollars that are being charged to the general assistance account. The dollars certainly are there along with the, you know, the the complementary, if you will, social security dollar, the IMRF, the health insurance, which is, has gone up quite incredibly large, and I believe it will go up. And I think that those dollars, this is my recommendation, should be increased. It's not a huge amount, but it is, it is something that this account can sustain. I think it's more than documentable, if you will, because we're looking at about an 18%, which is a conglomerate of not only Gene Ross's time, but also of any time that I would spend with anything with Gene and whatever the supervisor would spend or anything of that nature. So we're 18% of the of the salaries in that is not an outlandish thing. It's not as if we're trying to write off a whole, a whole thing. If that recommendation is not acceptable, I certainly can put that back. It does impact turning back to the third page, the amount of dollars that I've budgeted for the administration because in essence, these two items, the staff salaries on both of these items, the social security, the IMRF, and the insurance, those two total will give you the total township dollars related to staff efforts and benefits. So then I do want, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The increase is $1,800, not 18%, correct?
Correct. There's 18%, it's 18% of the basis of the total salaries and the total dollars. Because the.
Where are you?
I'm on, I'm going back and forth on page three and page four. Look at, page four is what we're, what I'm recommending we increase. If you look under the sale, it's under administration on the, almost to the bottom of the page. And under the GA. And this is where this gets a little. Yeah. On the fourth page.
I've got, I'm looking at page four here. And I'm looking at page three, and your page three and four that you're working on don't seem to jive up with my printout.
Okay, but well, on page three, the salaries, do you see there like a 68,000 on the far right hand column for salaries?
Nope. Not online.
On page four, not page three, Diane.
Okay, on page four. I'm sorry, I thought I said page four. On the far right hand column, it should be 68,000 for the salaries. And if we were looking on page three, it's 310,800.
So John, Diane is allocating 18% of the those totals to general and still 82% under the.
For the town fund.
Town fund. And I think it's very reasonable and very modest. I wonder if we could go a ditch more?
We we probably could if we were going, we could certainly. We haven't done so in probably four years, five years. I would, I would guess it's been this, I believe, for this last board. The whole intention of this was to capture and charge the town or the general assistance account for hours spent on general assistance. When this was all originally started, people with, everyone went around and around. Should it be a full salary, shouldn't? The social worker doesn't do 100% of her time. She does other, obviously, other tasks as all of us do. But this is to capture time that is being spent, a reasonable amount of time. I'm, yes, we could go up. I was trying to do it in an increment that I thought was reasonable. I applied the same percentage we had applied and applied that, and certainly the base of salaries and the base of all the costs go up. So that's where the differential came from.
And and am I correct that there's legislation being contemplated, which we may be in favor of, to try to get some of the excesses sitting in these general assistance funds back over to the to the everyday fund? Gail, is that something?
That's Gail question. We did that once many years ago in 2003. That was a one, and what was my understanding is.
We were allowed.
Yeah, we were allowed and and the township took advantage of that. And I think Stefan, you might have been there at that time as well.
Certainly talked to other people who are running for supervisor, and we may be trying to push our legislators for something like that.
But if you're recommending 18%, Diane, we're, it's going to be hard for us to disagree with you. I mean, that, if you think that's an incremental and justifiable amount, that sounds reasonable. And we defer to your judgment.
Well, thank you. And I did that in in to try to keep it, the calculation similar. And what's happened is we are now five years or whatever years later, and the basis has changed. That's why the dollars. And it's, and you're correct, it's not a huge amount. We could certainly go higher. I don't know. Do we want to make it so?
Well, let's let's have something definitive here. What what do you want us to do, Diane? Because we're obviously happily willing to do what you think is right. And you told us you want to go from 64 to 68 on the salaries and some other stuff.
I think that this is, I would recommend this at this point in time, we certainly could. And if we have this option to pull dollars, that's another way we can look at this every year. I think it's reasonable and it's.
Let's not drift off. Let's stick with what you've got here.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Go.
A couple of reports ago, Brian said that nobody's using mobility access. I know it's only $1,000, but I want to point that out. That's on page two.
Correct.
Also on page two, I noticed Diane, you dropped contract hire from 15,000 to 10,000.
Correct.
Is that based on the fact that we're not using as much contract hire or what?
Yes, to answer the first question, the mobility that, I left that line item, and I had that same thought in my, and when I was going through this, I'm leaving it pretty much as a placeholder. I don't see that that's going to happen. We have had the contract. I don't have this available to me right now. But if we're going to do that, we need to make sure, and I'm sure Brian would say absolutely not, we haven't done this in months or in probably a year, two years would be my guess. But we need to notify the people, and we can certainly do that. Would it ever, would it ever come back? Then we'd have to add that as a new line item or then whatever. But yes, I did, did, did take a look at that. The contract hire, we weren't using the dollars. This is probably about the third year. We haven't used those dollars. Notwithstanding that there could be a change here in the dollars or whatever is used with the new clerk's office or whatever the case may be. But I think the 10,000. But I think the ten thousand real, is realistic. We could, if we needed to, if we had some kind of a spike, we could handle that at the end of the fiscal year.
Diane, are the, uh, people who clean up the township and stuff, are they still contract hire or not?
No, 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 we haven't had that for several, no, they're, they're part of the company. No, 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 that's
So contract hires are, like deputy clerk, uh, Jack doesn't come out of there at all?
No, Jack is, uh, Jack is contract hire, but he is with his own company, Wisdom Bridge. So he is, um, listed as the communications.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I mean, he's still hourly, but it still is, it is still in a different category. We've categorized it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have, if I'm reading this right, we've got a fiscal twenty twenty-two budget recommendation. Uh, is that a hard recommendation or is it just a draft?
It's a hard recommendation, um, that I would like so that I can proceed if it is decided and there's not changes or whatever the case is, that we can proceed and then put this in a format that would be presented to the board for approval.
Got it.
At the next meeting, which is why I mentioned we need to do it in April sometime.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I thought you just said we don't need one.
Right.
But if it's a recommendation, then it somehow we may need to, um, say that this is the recommendation and obviously it'll be, uh, voted, uh, voted on at the, probably the next meeting.
Uh, next meeting we'll vote on it. Okay. Anybody got any further questions?
I do. Jack, um, I'm looking at the communications budget, um, which was the same from last year. Would you mind ahead of our next, our next meeting, when we were going to approve the budget? If you could just give us a breakdown of how you want to spend that budget?
Of course. Sure. Happy to.
Thank you.
But to clarify, Gail, we're going to move forward with this. There's not going to be a change because what happens is that the next meeting, we'll have a document that's prepared to go to the county. Is that a correct assessment of what we're doing?
I mean, we have to, we have to put it out for inspection. We've got to post it. So it could change.
No, we're, we do put, well, what we're going to do is put that we could change it at the final, but I'm just asking if
Yeah.
maybe Jack could present something to all of us if there's something, if it's going to change so that when this is built in, because this will become one of the line items.
Right.
I'm concerned on communications. We, we know that we have some work to do. We have to improve in certain ways. Some more of Jack, is Jack's time's going to be required in twenty twenty-two? Is that sufficient, Jack, that, that, keeping that communications, um, number the same as it was last year? Or do we need to enhance that, that budget?
I increased it to forty-two.
I don't know if you folks can hear me, my internet connection.
We hear you fine.
We, we, uh, well, and I think I will also lean to trustee, soon-to-be supervisor Eisenberg's judgment. I know she has some ideas on some new programs, uh, new events and things that she would like to do. Uh, and Diane, I believe, you know, printing paper is a commodity. As you see, the, the, the budget is a moving target as the commodities move. So we're going to need, uh, some latitude there. And Gail, I think, you know, there's some things that we've discussed that we probably ought to clarify before the budget gets locked in because, you know, I would like to be able, and Elliot, to your point, I mean, if we're going to, because I provided that website analysis, I don't really know where we're going to go regarding the website. So there are some open variables that, yes, would affect my time if we were to take on some new projects.
May I make a comment here on this communications thing? We've been going round and round for several years on communications. We, who are the people that were elected first time four years ago, said, you know, we wanted to build a reputation and, and I've been thinking to myself, our communications budget, of which Jack is the one that puts it together, is inadequate. And I think that to, to think that we're going to do anything, uh, differently and under the same budget, I think that's, uh, wishful thinking. I'm, I, if I were, uh, putting the, the budget together, that particular line item, I would expect to see go up significantly. I don't mean up twenty thousand, but I mean, I, I just think putting in the same number year after year, uh, is getting us nowhere.
I, I would concur.
I bet you would.
Yeah. If we have, we, we have that flexibility, we had been at, and I see you're looking at forty-two. We had been at forty thousand last year. The year before, we were up in the mid-fifties, probably fifty-six, Jack, just it wasn't something in that area.
That was about right.
Or perhaps a couple of years ago was hovering almost under six, because what was happening is we had the website. And to this discussion, the website, um, certainly, uh, is, is something that's not going to, we have the September, I understand, the September, date where we would look at if we're going to change, but, um, that perhaps could be something that we could adjust at that time. It wasn't the forty thousand. The actual is right, you spent was thirty-nine, and that's why I had put it up to the forty-two to increase that at the sixty-five dollars an hour. But certainly, these are the kind of, you know, dollars or, or suggestions I need before we go forward if we're planning on getting this approved and finalized.
I, I can coordinate with Gail because I know you have some ideas and Elliot, I know you've got some thoughts. John, if you want, or, uh, uh, Stefan want to weigh in, Jan, whoever needs, is, is anticipating doing more, we probably ought to aggregate our thinking. But yeah, I, I've got ideas and, you know, I, I think to John's point, yes, I mean, we, we do need to do more if we are going to get more eyes on the material. If we are going to increase our partnerships with the villages on some events, do more communications or share costs on, on joint promotions. We are going to need money to do that for sure.
So if we could come up with, after your discussions or whatever, the input, come up with a figure, and you'd mentioned previously the printing and publishing. We were sitting at forty thousand, forty thousand five hundred this year. I left it at the fifty thousand. Which I believe that if we're sitting at the forty, then if you, that would be a dollar a month that you'd have to, for somehow outline, you know, lay that
Why don't we let, uh, Jack and Gail get a run at this thing, uh, Diane? And come back and say fifty thousand plus forty-two thousand is adequate, is inadequate. We want to do this, that, or some, I mean, I'd like to hear their thinking. And I, I'll be happy to email them both a couple of thoughts that I have. And nothing is free, you know, you, you can't, you see all this wonderful stuff on television advertising and let me tell you, they don't get that free.
Nope. Okay. Well, then I'm going to look to Jack and to Gail after whatever, to give me these two line item dollars. Certainly the postage, we were twenty-five, we spent fifteen-five. Jack, I would say, you know, and I know that you would work with Wally. Well, he would be the one helping you with the postage and that. Um, but if we're looking at the postage.
We're not. We're looking at the big bucks.
Oh, no, but those are the kind of line items that, from my perspective, I need dollars that I can work with to create this document and move it forward for this.
Fair enough.
Thank you for your, your work on this. It sounds like our plan would be that our next meeting, we will come up with a more finalized version after any input that's necessary, um, so that we're all ahead of the deadline to post the budget, which is not until May. So.
Well, that's very drop, no, that's the end of it. It's got to be before that. It's
Right. You've got to get it done before the next meeting, so we can vote on it at the next meeting.
Right.
Right. So we're looking, instead of waiting till the next meeting, Gail, I would suggest if prior to that, those line items, I've noted the printing, the postage and the communications or any, those dollars could be given to me, then I could move forward because it's a lot easier to have a complete draft than it is once it's in that format.
Will certainly work with.
Okay.
Okay.
Diane, I have a question unrelated to this.
Sure.
What information do you include in the annual report for the annual town meeting?
It's a, um, I don't have a copy here. It's basically a, I believe, um, I'm doing this from memory, a two-page where it gives you dollars, beginning balance, ending balance, where we think the, the fund, where the funds had been spent. Um, it's very brief compared to this. It's a recap of what would be the final. For instance, I wouldn't use this document because it doesn't provide all of the expenses, but it's looking for a recap of what the February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one expenses were.
Has that document been created yet?
No, no, I, I'm not able to create until I, this document is finished.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from this end? And we'll all be interested, Diane, in seeing a redraft of the budget. Okay, trustee liaison reports. Let's lead off with Gail and mental health.
All right, mental health. Matt, um, the biggest news that I have to report was that Samara Care and Samara Care Counseling have merged and are looking for a permanent office space in Nutria Township, and all of their therapists are fully utilized. So I thought that was an interesting one to share with the board.
Yeah. Okay, Stefan, anything from you on agency oversight?
Actually, what happened was due to technical problems, they weren't able to have the meeting that was scheduled, and it's rescheduled for the twenty-fourth of April. I'll be out of town. So if somebody wants to cover the format, I'd appreciate it, but I will not be there for that meeting.
Okay. My turn. Next money follows the person. That's humming along. Uh, the letters are, are going to go out. Brian's got everything. Uh, the last meeting was mercifully short. I would say this about all of these things, and we all know it. Brian's does need more committee members, and every time you hear from him, uh, he puts that as a PS on all of his communications. Uh, I'm a little old to go routing my friends out because they're all in the various nursing homes, so. Let me tell you. So, follows the person, nothing, nothing to report, nothing interesting anyway. Okay, we got, um, what's that?
Elliot was saying somebody was muted.
I'm sorry. Stefan, tell me the date of that agency oversight meeting you need covered.
April twenty-fourth.
April twenty-fourth is a Saturday.
The what? I'm sorry, March twenty-fourth. My apologies, Elliot. It's a Wednesday.
I've got it covered for you.
Thank you, Elliot.
Elliot, you're a lovely person to do that.
I miss my eight, I miss my, uh, committees.
Yeah.
No worries. He'll be back next year.
Next year, yeah. Okay, we got, and I guess what we supposed to do is, if anybody has any comments, feel free to make them on the staff board reports, and we all got hard copies. And I don't have any comments. Anybody have any comments? Otherwise, we'll acknowledge that we got them and read them.
I'm done.
Okay. So let's put that in the minute, Sandy, is we acknowledge the staff board reports and we, we praise them for their lucidity and their, oh, never mind. Okay, continuing business. Anybody got any, can, what used to be called old business, we now call continuing business. I don't have anything. No? Okay. New business, annual town meeting discussion. Stefan.
I just wanted to make sure that the annual town meeting would recognize that we decided that we were going to go a hundred percent virtual, that we approved the agenda. I wanted to discuss the idea of giving Alan something more than the award. I think I've accomplished everything I wanted to on that issue, but that's why I said, because I specifically wanted to call it out for those reasons. If I missed something, feel free to advise me, but
Oh, I love your idea on Alan, yeah.
It's a good idea. I, I have a question, um, about it, just I'm curious, just because Jerome, of course, is the one who put the agenda together. And Jerome would never recommend anything for himself. Is there some way to put in some kind of recognition of his service into this meeting?
There is actually. Isn't he getting an award?
Yeah.
How long's he been a town clerk? Twelve years?
He's getting a township service award.
Oh, he is. Oh, okay. He is. Good. All right. Okay.
Well deserved.
That, that went out of, that got glitched in the English. I knew he was getting something, but I, he just said, we're both going out at the same time. And I didn't know what that held on to. So good. Thank you.
Okay, now we come to this. Yeah, Gail, go ahead.
Just a quick note for everyone that this weekend is, um, the township is partnering with Glencoe on the kitchenware collection event. So you should see, um, information in our, you know, we, our bi-weekly newsletter. You've probably seen it online. Um, so if you have kitchen items that have been sent around your house, this is the time to go to our contactless collection event at the Glencoe station. Um, also, um, and Jack mentioned this in his report, um, he mentioned the vaccination, um, collaboration. Um, just to give a quick update on that, uh, we were, we were able to get our, our, um, frontline staff offered vaccinations. Um, so that was helpful. And as well, we were, we are working with them to try to identify seniors in Nutria Township to try to, oh, have you not been vaccinated, John? Who have not been vaccinated, um, who would like to be vaccinated at Nutria High School, um, site. So, uh, you'll be, you will be receiving, um, a blurb about that so you can share with your friends. Um, but we are, um, going to be helping them over the next couple, couple of weeks, um, to prepare for, um, that initiative. So if you do have time, a lot of this is going to involve calling a substantial number of people on our lists to make sure that they have been vaccinated and if, and if not, helping them make an appointment. So I would very much appreciate the help. Um, you know, the staff has been very helpful pulling lists of seniors that we, you know, have contacts for. But it's, it's still going to be arduous. It's probably been an eight-hundred-person list on dial right alone. So, um, please let me know if you're interested in taking a couple pages of that. We'll have a sense of how many slots we have, um, on Friday, which means that early next week is going to be go, go, go.
Yeah, they said it's a scramble. Once they, once you get the number of slots, we're working with, uh, Mike Bremen from the new village manager of Womet and Phil Corralay, uh, the village manager of Glencoe, and they've both been very, uh, gracious, inviting both Gail and I into some phone calls to keep us in the know. So great guys to work with.
What are the, what is the cut, cutoff in age, um, Jack? How, what, how, how, how old or how young? What's the cutoff?
They, they are looking, Gail, correct me if I'm wrong, sixty-five and over still, and then they're looking at, uh, people that, uh, may have disabilities and other conditions that need immediate attention as far as vaccinations, but it's the older sixty-five plus.
Any idea how many slots will be prioritized for, uh, township leads?
We're hoping one thousand two hundred.
That's the goal.
Gail?
I'm sorry?
Twelve hundred, Gail?
That's the plan. We're not the only ones, obviously, slating people. Um, you know, the, the, they're also working with the family service agencies. Um, you know, and we will be sending out blurbs to the senior, to the senior center, to Argent, um, Argentum Care, um, and to Meals on Wheels, but ultimately, you know, we're the repository, um, for people coming, coming in and needing a, um, appointment.
This would be a huge project for like the, one of our, uh, agencies, the volunteer center. Bring in a few of those folks, let them use our phone banks and let's get this done.
I am going to contact Barb right away.
It's a great idea. She's, she's a, a, a master at rallying people around causes.
There, right now, there is no greater calling than somebody that can hook up somebody in need of a vaccination with a reliable vaccination. That is a blessing. A lot of volunteers would love that job.
Absolutely. I'll call, I'll contact her right away. And she has, um, she's been useful, um, on some other initiatives that we've had. So obviously, a great partner.
And the villages are very anxious to work with us. I mean, they've been very gracious and, and Mike is brand new in the job and, and he's just been a super partner and he's only been on the job a couple of weeks, so.
What reception, if any, did you get from the village of Onetka, Rob Behan, the village manager?
The villages are the ones The villages are the ones that have been coordinating, so I'm glad that they brought us in, but it really came from the villages, actually.
Yeah. The villages of Glencoe actually started the dialogue with me because I've just had a working relationship with, with them. I've talked with the fire chiefs and a couple other folks that were on the calls, and they're all vested in getting as many people vaccinated as quickly as they possibly can. They're, they're working some yeoman hours right now to get this done, and they want us.
Well, wait a minute. You're talking they, they, they. Who is they? Womet? Glencoe?
All the villages, all the North Shore Nutria villages are coordinating, fire chiefs, village managers, they're all having Zoom calls and conference calls to coordinate a township-wide effort, and they want us to be an active part of it.
Great.
I think is a great opportunity, so.
Yeah.
I have some questions if I can. Gail, when you said Nutria High School, you mean the West High School, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then, you know what vaccine we're getting issued, or that's?
They do not know. Friday.
And if you know somebody who's in need of a vaccine, who, who should we have them contact at this point?
So my current, and I've been working back and forth with the staff on creating, making this as clean as we can. Currently, the emails will go to me, and otherwise, people can call directly the township line, the regular office line, and be connected to a staff member.
And that's who we talked to about setting up an appointment for somebody who needs it?
Exactly.
Correct.
After Friday, it needs to be, don't have the link.
Are you starting after the 29th of March, which is the date that the new Section C comes in, or ASAP, or what?
We're hoping to have this, to have this first initiative on the 25th, March 25th.
Okay, because four days later, they're opening it up to a whole nother category.
Well, then it'll be even more difficult for those who are in 1B.
Right, exactly.
So let's get that.
About you folks, but I will tell you that of 30 people I know who are well over the age of 75, not one has been able to find the vaccination.
That, that is, that's bad news. That's horrible.
And what they keep saying is, oh, try the United Center, and I keep saying, that's wonderful. That's Chicago only, folks.
John, absolutely have them get in touch with us. We have, this is amazing opportunity for us to serve our residents, so.
Absolutely. This, this is huge.
John, if I, here's a suggestion, which is working, but it's a little arduous. If you get up at 5:55 AM, the Walgreens app, the Walgreens site is having openings almost every day now.
Oh, yeah.
Up in the area.
I tried them at 6:30.
5:55, 5:55 AM.
Thank you.
Gail or Jack, if you need me to make phone calls or do anything at all, do not hesitate to call me. I mean, this is really.
Yeah, I can do that.
I appreciate you both helping out. That'd be great. I probably intend to kind of make the township my home base for the, for the week next week, so if anyone wants to join me there, socially distance, and that way we can triage anything that needs to be triaged.
For sure.
If you, it's my opinion, Gail, that if you advertise that the township has shots available.
Placed.
Go ahead, Elliot. Gail, my point was, it seems to me that if you let people know that the township has a potential availability of vaccine, I would almost guess you could fill those 1,200 spots without calling a soul.
Yep. We will certainly find out. We'll see how, how RackSpace works on my email. Yes, you know, certainly, if we can, if we can find people who, if people who need it are able to find us, that's a lot simpler.
But we, but guys, we, one of the problems that we're never getting all these 1B people vaccinated is because people are going into the system and just lying. We just have to be very careful and make sure that 65 and older, that's easy, right? And people with health conditions, I mean, if they check the box and say, I've got a condition, nobody double checks that. So I would say, let's get the 65 and older, and then if we have any leftover, then you go arguably people with the health condition. John, you and your friends over 65 should be.
Over 75.
Please, yes, let's get them on the. So please be attentive to your emails. You know, we, the dial-a-ride is almost entirely over 65, so that is a pretty good list for us, and does have, has everybody's ages, birthday, so that's really nice, because that's one of the, one of the criteria. And Jan was able to pull senior exemption requests, so we do have a pretty good list if we do need to fill. But I hope you are all right, and everybody finds out that we're able to help them and that we're able to be the middleman.
Are you scheduling appointments already, Gail, or not?
No.
But again, we want to, we got to be careful because we don't, we don't want people to be angry with us because we weren't able to give them the vaccine.
Right, so this is 65 plus only, obviously limited supply, we'll make that clear. And, and it is only available, you know, once we get the numbers, we'll know on, on Friday what we're, what our actual numbers are, so.
There, there are exceptions. I know this area pretty well. There's exceptions to the 65 rule within the B class, and so those people would also be appropriate, but it's my understanding that you need a number from the state in order to register for anybody. Are we facilitating that, or is that something people do and then call us and say, my number is XYZ?
I've got one.
No.
Okay, so you got one, John?
Yeah, and you don't, a senior does not need to have an Illinois site number. The websites all ask you that, but you can say, no, I don't have an Illinois number, and you can go right forward from there.
But if you're, if you're one of the exceptions.
Public Health, Chicago Public Health, or Cook County Public Health, rather.
But if, if you're an exception.
Put you in a queue.
If you're an exception to the 65, then you have to have that number, is my.
I think that, yeah, I think that's what it's for.
This particular clinic is sticking with the 65 to keep it clean. They're not, they're not going 1B plus.
Well, they have to let people, if somebody's under 65, but they qualify for other reasons, they have to acknowledge that. You can't just say 65 and older period.
Well, here's, here's where we have to be careful. We want this to be a net positive for the township, not a fiasco. So we've got to be very clear on who we're trying to get into those slots, and I think if we stuck with the age criteria, we'd run into less trouble, Stefan.
Yep. You can't do that.
Well, no, so you did not expand to 1B plus.
As long as you qualify with 1B plus, for whatever reason, you're entitled to the vaccine, and not everybody in 1B plus is based on age. For instance, school teachers are part of 1B plus, but most of them are not even close to 65 or so.
Correct.
exclude that group, because you really can't.
Well, there are special clinics that they've been doing just for the teachers.
I understand that, but if a teacher shows up and says, I'm a teacher, I have a true township, I have my number from the state, and I'm 26 years old, you can't deny them a vaccine, I don't think.
I will bring that up to, to the organizers. My understanding is all we need to get, gather from residents is name, date of birth, address, phone, or email.
Okay, Elliot, to your point, we don't want this to be a fiasco, and you don't want to deny it to people who are entitled to it.
But what I'm suggesting to you, Stefan, is that half the state got qualified, including a bunch of kids on the North Shore, got 1Bs because they all filled it out that they've got health issues, and most.
I know that. I understand that, Elliot.
We got to get our seniors vaccinated. We got to get our seniors vaccinated.
But you can't discriminate. You cannot discriminate. It's not your decision to discriminate.
Somebody, if some, if some North Shore brat shows up with a 1B, and we give him a slot, when we have no way of knowing whether.
Elliot, I'm not talking about the North Shore brat. I'm talking about somebody who's under 65, who has a health condition, who's qualified under the criteria. You can't say, no, you can't get a vaccine because you're not 65. That's my point. I'm not worried about North Shore brat, and plenty of them have gotten vaccines. My focus is on 65 and under, but with a condition which justifies them getting a vaccine.
It's not the, Cook County has not expanded to 1B plus, and we're in Cook County.
What does 1B plus mean?
They added the conditions in.
The conditions.
They absolutely have, Gail. They're absolutely giving vaccines to people under 65 with illnesses and conditions. Absolutely.
At private places, not at government places.
Sure about that?
I mean, I was, I listened to the, to the press, to the press conference when Tony said that they weren't going to expand. But that's, you know, that's where I'm at, at this point. It was, remember Lori Lightfoot and Tony Preckwinkle did a joint statement saying that they weren't going to expand because they haven't been able to reach all the seniors.
Okay, Elliot, again, to your point, these things need to be clarified so we don't get caught short.
Well, we don't end up having this being negative slap in the face.
Correct.
But again, this is a government, these are government slots because they're going to be at the high school, and I wonder if we could just say, if we could put an age, our slots can't do.
You cannot. That's not your prerogative. It's not.
I wonder if that's it.
I, I mean, I, I practice in this area.
Gail and Jack, you guys will look into.
Because remember, people who, people are only protected if they're over 40, not under.
Say that again, Gail. I'm misunderstanding. I didn't hear you.
You, so when you're talking about programs being discriminatory, you know, it, first of all, age is always its own, its own beast because there are so many reasons that are considered valid, but young people are not a protected class.
Yeah, no, I'm not, again, my, my focus is not on the young people. It's people who have a disability or an illness who are not 65. That's really my focus.
I will bring it up to the, to the villages, since it's their program and they're administering, administering it through the county. So the county gets the, is, the doses come to us.
The deal.
So we're simply getting some slots. The villages are allowing the township some slots.
Right.
Yeah, I'm mute, Jack. We, we were hoping to enlist Jean's support because as the social worker, she's most tuned in to who the greatest need would be, and what, what Phil was emphasizing was, you know, trying to, from within the township, identify the people who would be older and in need of the shot, may not have a smartphone, you know, the, the most vulnerable citizens that we would be able to help from within through the social workers' recommendation. And, and there's a private portal that, say, Jean would have access to, that she would be able to go in and make the appointment on behalf of that individual, and lock it in and make sure that they are slotted because they may not have a cellphone to respond to the text confirmation. So this is a very specialized thing, and that's why they asked for our help, and because of the people we help, and we have that ability to identify them from within. So that's going to be a critical component here.
One other point, now just shut up, and that is that it's one thing to get the first vaccine. We have to be in a system where that second appointment is automatic, because that's been a real problem for some people.
Right. Assuming it works like the ones, one that's happening on Thursday, they have a date that is specifically the second dose for that particular clinic day.
Correct.
And they're also sometimes switching the, the vaccine. There are cases now coming up where somebody got the Moderna vaccine, they had an appointment set up for three weeks or four weeks later, whatever the timeframe is, then they get there and they find out that it's Pfizer that day. Not a good situation. But I think, I think what I'm hearing everybody saying is that we really can't advertise or open it up like the township has these slots. We really have to kind of do it on the, the lowdown and just contact the specific people that Jean tells us to contact instead of opening it up. I mean, am I understanding it correctly?
I want people to be able to, who, who need to have the service to be able to have the service. So, you know, we're, this is not going to be our only chance. This is the only chance right now. So, you know, step one is this, this 1,200 slots. You know, we'll continue. But let's, let's get the arms done. I don't know if I can physically call 800 people, you know. So, you know, if, if we can have some people who want to say, by the way, I'm over 65 and I haven't been able to have access, that's great.
So how, how, how do you, how would we advertise it if we're going to open it up like that? How would we solicit the people calling?
So the current, I'll get the current verbiage from the blurb. And being workshopped a bit with the staff right now. My, my current version is simply calling Nutria Township residents over 65 years old. Are you having trouble obtaining a COVID-19 vaccine? Please email Township Trustee Gail Schnitzer Eisenberg at gsisenberg@nutriartownship.com, or call the township for assistance between March 25th and 24th, when it gives the office number.
Do we put that on?
Depending on how that's estimated, there could be a big onslaught.
I'm sorry? It could be a big onslaught, yes.
And when you have a big onslaught and somebody's call isn't returned, or they can't get through, it can, it can be bad.
I would hate for it to be the enemy of, you know, the, the good. You know, so I'm, I'm open to suggestions. Like I said, we're workshopping it with the staff. Yeah, but this, we have to put out some sort of information this week, so, because next week is going to be slotting. Slot, slot, slot.
I think you might want to hold off until, if you're going to have some of us, and Elliot and I have volunteered, do a lot of phone call work and this and that, you may find that you're just absolutely swamped and you don't have any spots left over. My impression is amongst my crowd is that nobody's getting shots unless they're a veteran, they go up to the hospital in Great Lakes or something, you know.
Well, please, yes, please reach around, but I hate to just be people who know us, so, you know, I'd like it to be, you know, obviously open to anyone at the township, in the township, so I feel like it's fairest to put out that kind of, of a request.
Yeah, but how are you, I'm with you. I'd love it, but how are we going to put it out? You're going to hand flyers at the train station, posters and?
Right. It's got to be multiple avenues, so the concept would be to put it in this Friday's courier.
Dispatch.
Dispatch, sorry.
That's cool. That's cool.
And then, but also then to make use of the lists that we have collected.
Right, we, we have with the website, we have the capability to do a push email through people who have opted in to get township, either assessor or general info. We've got different categories that I can do a push email through the website, and, and it also has the capability to text a person as well if they've given us a cellphone or smartphone.
How many addresses do you have, Jack? If you were?
Um, a couple thousand, 2,000, thereabouts.
All you need is one tenth of them to tell five people, and those five people tell five people.
Yeah.
And you'll, the phone, phone will be overwhelmed, overwhelmed. This has been, overall, this faxing rollout's been very poorly managed, Illinois, very poorly. And how many lines do we have at the township office?
Man.
Sorry, I was on mute. We have the main line, and then Larisha's able to transfer to four or five lines, three or four lines perhaps.
Good luck.
If we use our main line, then people calling for other township business won't be able to get through. It's, it's going to be rough. That's why it would be great to have a bank of volunteers set up at a phone bank where we could have a special line, just. at a phone bank where we could have a special line, just, we'd call it the, you know, vaccine hotline and we'll fill those twelve hundred slots in, in twenty-four hours, I'm sure of it. And a lot of people will go.
You have a week to accomplish it. It's not going to happen. And Jack, to your point, the people that you're, that you have access to, it's all because of electronics and the people you want to get to are the ones that don't have the electronics. There's a contradiction on its face.
But their, their kids are on the list or their nephew or their neighbor.
Well, this is part of why I've been carping about a database for years because if we had a database with all these variables in it.
Hey, look, we're drifting. Gail's got this wonderful idea. Let's move on and get done with our meeting. Okay?
But I wanted to say something about the township telephones. Two years ago in twenty nineteen, Len and I simply talked to the, the, our phone company provider and got them to set us up with a third line. We used the old passport office for it so that phone calls could be collected and we wouldn't have them ringing with people in our offices all day long because it was reassessment year. And it really worked out quite well. And that could be done, you know, I mean, that's simple. That's just, that's just the phone company flipping a switch. So, I mean, it's electronic and done very quickly and, and then somebody could just collect messages on that line.
All I can say is that vaccines are like the Rolling Stones are announcing a tour on the North Shore. We've got one thousand twelve, we got twelve hundred seats available. It's, that's what, that's how desperate the situation is. You guys hear me?
Yeah.
Right. So what do we think? You know, my, I don't want my idealism also to be naivety. So what, what, does the board feel like we should go ahead and, in phone bank, you know, straight from Monday through, through Wednesday? You know, what, and not do a blast? What are, you know, what's the consensus here?
I think the blast could be dangerous. It could overwhelm.
I love it, but I think, I'm with you, Elliot. Yeah. It could, you could just blow up the whole township and your phone lines and everything else will go bluey.
And a lot of unhappy people saying that it was done unfairly, to Stefan's point. I mean, it's, none of this is being done fairly. We just have to be very thoughtful and careful about how we execute this. It's, it's, it's beautiful that we have twelve hundred slots. I just don't know how you fill those slots in a fair equitable, equitable way. I mean, maybe people over seventy-five. Maybe we focus on over seventy-five.
Can't do that.
I can't sort, I can't sort the dial-a-ride, by the way. It's in a PDF and it cannot be exported in Excel. Fun fact. So you can't sort.
Given the comments of everybody, here's just an idea. Can we get an ad in the Willmelt Life for next week and have a phone number to Jan's point with a specific number and say in the ad, first, first come, first served, and when we're out, we're out. And be very upfront about it. Jan, you don't think you can get an ad by next week, right?
And you'll be problem with.
Yeah, you'd be, it'd, it'd be, you know, you pretty much missed the window at this point in the week because we're already at Tuesday.
Yep. Okay, I wasn't sure. That's fine.
I mean, the record North Shore is electronic. You could do that instantaneously with an online vehicle, but print is, 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 you need a lead time ramp up for that.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
What about the patch? Oh, but that's online again. Never mind.
It's online, yeah.
Right.
A good point, Stefan, is that any solicitation we do has to be, to be clear that we have a very limited number of spots and it's going to be kind of a first come, first.
It has to be. It has to be. That gets us off the hook.
Right.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Disclaimer.
Yeah.
I guess the solution is try your electronic methods with a caveat that it's a very limited number and it's first come, first served.
Okay, that makes sense.
And let the, let the three, let Brian, it'll be, it'll be poor Larisha. It'll be, I mean, the, the phone will be nonstop that day or that twenty.
Well, the concept would be Larisha to be picking up the phone and passing it on to another staff member so that she, she's not the one talking, that we're getting it off of her line, the regular line and going to different other people.
Jean, are we actually scheduling them? Are we saying, Mr. Smith, then you're supposed to be here at this time on this date?
Yes, it's all at the same place. It's all the same. And so it is just a matter of times. Yes.
And you definitely have the slots allotted. It's twelve hundred and, they're not.
Have them now.
Friday, we find out for sure.
They come from the, they come from federal government to the county government to us. So, you know, we got to find out what happens when it trickles down.
I'll keep my fingers firmly crossed.
Absolutely.
John, you, John, you and your wife get the first appointment.
God, I would hope so.
Can we call with our. But yes, so please tell your friends.
Yeah. Now, we have one little piece of business left and it's called approval of claims. We go through this and I've got it all written out so that I can read it off. Somebody will, I hope, second my motion and then I will be able to send a written copy of what I've read to Sandy and to Jerome so their minutes are clear. Okay? So, let me, I move that we approve payroll checks for the period February first twenty twenty-one through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one numbered seven, seven, six, zero through seven, 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 six for a total disbursement of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and change.
I second the motion.
I guess we have to, it's money, so we have to have a roll call.
Yes.
Okay. Diane, you want to call off the names and we'll answer?
Okay, I can do that. Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Moser?
Yes.
Trustee, excuse me, trustee Robbins?
Yes.
Trustee Eisenberg?
Yeah.
We have a agreement or what we want to call that, a.
Four eyes, no names.
Right.
All right. So now we go to the next one, which is I moved that we approved town fund checks for the period February first, twenty thousand, two thousand twenty-one through February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one numbered two, five, six, nine, eight through two, five, seven, six, five for a total disbursement of five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, five hundred and forty-seven and twenty-nine cents.
I second the motion.
Just for public record and those who are listening online, the vast majority of these dispersments are for our agencies. That's why it's a hefty.
Okay.
Okay, we'll do the roll call.
Yes, please.
Okay, trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Robbins?
Yes.
Trustee Moser? Yes, trustee Eisenberg?
Yes.
We have four yeses.
Okay. Last bit of business, as best I can see from the agenda, is the April board meeting date and it would normally fall on April twentieth.
What day of the week is April twentieth?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
The, the annual town.
So it's the week after.
Right, it's the week, the April twentieth, right.
Works for me.
Okay, everyone?
Yes.
April twentieth that it shall be unless something freezes over. So.
Fine. You never know what the weather around here was.
Um, John and Diane, do you need us to sign and mail in these two check approvals?
I think that they, Sandy, is Sandy on? I don't know if she's, no. Why don't we do that? We did the same thing as we did. And which, by the way, Gail, I didn't receive yours yet.
Oh.
The sign, the sign off on the documents.
That's because it's right here.
Okay, that could be why. But we, yes, we'll do that. That way I'll collect them and then make sure that I get those to Jerome or to Sandy when they're in the office.
So Diane, you'll send out an email with the document?
I, yes, yes, we'll do that. I'll have even Larisha send that out. She could just shoot it because she.
Whoa, 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 whoa. The hard copies that Larisha sent us of the town fund and the payroll, the last page is what they call the attestation and that's, oh no, that's for Jerome. Next to the last page
Right.
is the piece of paper you're looking for. So if I sign mine and mail it to Diane at the township office and we all do that, she's got what's needed.
But we, yeah, and we only just need the one document for both.
Yeah, one page. Well, you need one for payroll and one for town fund.
We only got one for payroll in the packet is what I'm looking at.
That's, that's correct. And then the one, there'll be one for the town fund at the back, like John noted. The reason there was more before was because we had done a larger stretch of, of the checks.
That was a clever runaround for the auditors.
Yes.
So do you want us to sign what we have? Diane, you want us to sign what we have and send it in?
Yes, that's fine. That was John. John's correct. Just send that in, mail it. And because tho, those documents in a regular time, Jerome would have that and would attach to his minutes or Sandy would.
Okay. Any, any other business? There's no visitors? Does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
All moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a wonderful weekend.
Thank you, John. Thank you all.
Good night.
Thanks for your help, John.
Good night.
Good night.